Good evening and welcome to the Putnam Valley Board of Education Business Meeting of June 3, 2021. I'd like to reconvene the meeting following our executive session and I'd like to do so by standing up and saluting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so for our first order of business, I'd like to resolve to approve the minutes for the Board of Education meetings that were held on May 4th, May 20th, and May 27th, 2021.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to announce that the Treasurer's Report for April 2021 is available in the business office. And now moving into presentations, Dr. Leff, do you want to do the buildup? Introduce our first one.
So, I would like to welcome up Ms. Jeanette Mestreta, who will be providing actually both presentations this evening. One, an update regarding our work from the Anti-Racism Committee, and two, a reading of District Policy Draft. Thanks.
Good evening. So, I want to say it was just about a year ago at this time that the district had had conversations regarding some of the things that were happening in our nation and how we should properly respond. And from those conversations, we created the Putnam Valley Anti-Racism Committee. That committee met several times over the summer with a consultant, and then we continued our work throughout the school year. So I'm just going to go through some of the highlights of the committee and some of the work that we did. So initially, we had really sort of asked ourselves, how do we intentionally work to become a professional community of anti-racist educators? We sort of allowed that question to really carry our work. We created core values for our work as a committee and as a group. We had agreed that no one here on the committee was an expert, that we were here to grow and we were here to learn together, that we will assume goodwill but acknowledge that good intentions does not mean no harm. We would discuss but not debate. We would acknowledge there are uncomfortable moments and possibly no closures at times. So we use the four principles in the culturally responsive sustaining framework to ground our work. Our co-chair Lauren Soprano attended a deep dive into equity, informing ourselves, transforming our schools. That was with Paul Gorski at BOSIS. Paul Gorski is the founder of the Equity Literacy Institute, and he helps others to strengthen equity within their organizations. Many of our resources from our committee that we shared this year were from Paul Gorski's work. We started much of our work with an inward look at ourselves. So we asked ourselves what biases and inequities have you discovered within your own sphere of influence and within your own work? Together, we discussed what is anti-racism. We shared and examined quotes, videos, case studies, and articles. And during our last meeting, we discussed and shared resources to respond to anti-Asian violence. And throughout the course of the year, we were very much in tune to what was happening in our nation and in the news. We engaged in professional learning around critical consciousness, courageous conversations, implicit bias, microaggressions, and supporting social and racial justice. We looked at anti-racism through the HR lens. So through examining our Putnam Valley demographics, we were able to compare the student and staff representation by ethnicity. And I'll speak a little bit later about the diversity, equity, and inclusion framework, but that's a big part of that as well. We discussed how we can shape our culture and institution through our hiring and retention practices. Dr. Dougherty and Mr. McCarty and Dr. Payne attended the Diversity Teacher Job Fair that was hosted by the Lower Hudson Council of School Personnel Administrators. We worked with Panorama Education to survey our teachers on the topics of belonging, cultural awareness, and action, and learning about equity. Our final meeting is next week, and our committee will be looking at equity, inclusivity, and diversity policy that I'll share tonight, the significance of Juneteenth, and using a protocol to analyze the panorama data and how we can use this information to further drive our PD that will help to continue to shift our instructional practices to ensure a more equitable and inclusive environment for all of our students and for our staff. In April, the Board released a draft framework and call to action for all schools to develop policy to advance diversity, equity, and inclusion as a priority in our schools. The framework recognizes that there is no single isolated answer to solve pervasive problems in relation to racism and bigotry, but rather a holistic and inclusive approach. The framework highlights the dangers in teaching courses of study through only one perspective and the impact of systematic racism on students and society. Through this framework, the Board of Regents is expressing its expectation that all districts will develop policies that enhance diversity, equity, and inclusion, and implement such policies with fidelity and urgency. As part of the DEI, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusivity Policy Initiative, the Board of Regents and State Ed will adopt a policy statement. They will be establishing a workshop of DEI to provide future policy and future recommendations for school districts and to provide resources for educators to adopt culturally responsive and sustaining education practices for schools. So as we move into this summer, we will continue to grow and to explore impacts of race and social justice within our community. Our Summer District Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee will address the needs for inclusive and culturally responsive teaching and learning. The committee will support the work of the Anti-Racism Committee, develop and implement policies and practices that advance diversity, equity, and inclusion, access, opportunity, innovation, trust, respect, and relationship building. So that is sort of an overview of our year with the Anti-Racism Committee.
Ms. Mestreta, can I ask one question? Were there any work done, and if so, in what way, for gaining particularly student input in their experience as being members of our school community and what their experiences were, as well as parents? First and foremost, I'm concerned about the student input.
Yes, so we have had a group of high school students that have expressed interest in all of this work. We actually had them join our committee for one of our meetings, and they're sort of our next step, but we wanted to have our policy in place and established with the district first, and they're going to be sort of a subgroup within our committee starting this summer. We recognize the importance of their voice.
Well, because they're living the experience.
Exactly.
And how about parent input? Is that another plan?
Yes. And some of our members are teacher-parent members for now, but also outside members.
And that's a question I had. The committee membership, I was interested in who exactly is on, not names, but who's on this committee?
So the committee, I'm sorry, I should have started with that. The committee is represented by teachers and staff members and a board member and the teachers from all three buildings and administrators from all three buildings.
But not currently parents?
I'm sorry?
Not currently, I'm sorry, not currently parents.
Parents that are staff members but not outside parents. That's sort of our phase two.
I think when we worked with a consultant over the summer to sort of develop the framework for this, really the year-one vision was about self-learning systems and practices internally, and that was sort of the advice that we were given, is to really sort of engage yourselves in this work, understand it, come up with sort of a vision and goals for the district, and then from there is your opportunity to expand that work outside. That if you start too wide, it's very hard to sort of get back down to that base level. So the recommendation was to start internally, build a good foundation, and then expand up from there. And that's certainly what our intention is.
Thank you. I believe our number is around 22 members in the committee.
I have a personal bias that I'm just going to ask the committee to look at for this year. I don't like, I hate the name Anti-Racism Committee, because I think, I'm going to walk the halls and ask anybody who thinks they're racist. Everybody is against racism, but it doesn't give you a direction on what you want to do. I vote for undoing racism, or the Ending Racism Committee, or Eliminating Racism in Our Schools Committee, or something to that effect. But your most virulent racist will say, "I'm not a racist," and it's about undoing systemic racism, not individuals.
So we had a lot of conversations.
I bet you have.
We had a lot of conversations about the committee name, the committee title. This summer, the committee work will be under the name Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, which comes from the state, requires us to have a policy and committee in place. And the work of the Anti-Racism Committee will fall underneath that.
I can live with that. That's all.
I think it's just important that we look at it through that wider lens that includes cultural competence and all the other framework and resources that are out there. I think that gives a more holistic, sort of real-world picture of what's going on as opposed to focusing on one aspect, which certainly we don't want to lose the anti-racist lens, but I think there's many other lenses in which the work of that committee should fall under in moving us forward.
And if you're addressing diversity, equality, and inclusiveness, that's inherently all anti-racist. Okay, so there'll be more work this summer, and we're going to keep bringing back who's ever standing in your position, and that's a later agenda item, to continue to report back.
We have a final meeting, we have a final meeting this year.
I'm sorry, one more time?
You said final meeting, you meant this year.
Yes, we have one more meeting next week for the school year, and then the next meeting will be in the summer.
I just want some information about this. Do you want us to continue this on?
Yes, yep, we have one more meeting next week. I believe it's next Thursday, one week from today.
Okay, you want to jump in? Jump right into the second agenda item, which would be a first reading of our equity, inclusivity, and diversity policy.
The Putnam Valley Board of Education is committed to creating and maintaining a positive and inclusive learning environment where all students, especially those currently and historically marginalized, feel safe, included, welcomed, accepted, and experience a sense of belonging and academic success in our community. General accepted beliefs and agreements. All children deserve to have equal access to opportunity regardless of the color of their skin, their gender, their sexual orientation, the language they speak, or their background. This freedom is fundamental to our K-12 education program and is extended to everyone without exception. We are committed to addressing inequities and helping each and every student to equitably access learning opportunities in school to enable them to thrive and to build a better society. Goals. The goal of the school district is to provide equitable, inclusive, and diverse opportunities for all students to reach their highest potential.
Jeanette, can you just scroll down, catch up where you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Sorry about that. Where was I? I lost my spot here.
And can I just comment on the fact, usually when we do a new policy, we don't read it. We assume people have read it, but this, we had told beforehand that we did ask Ms. Mestreta to read it out loud in detail.
Correct. Okay.
Go to goals. Start with goals.
Okay, we'll just start there. The goal of the school district is to provide equitable, inclusive, and diverse opportunities for all students to reach their highest potential. To achieve educational equity and inclusive education, the district will acknowledge the presence of culturally diverse students and the need for students to find relevant connections among themselves and the subject matter and the tasks teachers ask them to perform. The district will develop the individual and organizational knowledge, attitudes, skills, and practices to create culturally responsive learning and working environments that expect and support high academic achievement for students and employees from all racial groups. Differences will not just be seen as strengths, but they will be nourished, celebrated, and welcomed because they are what make students and families unique. In order to truly realize this goal, the Board, its officers, and employees shall be aware of historical injustices and inequities that have shaped our society and to recognize and eliminate the institutional barriers, including racism and biases that contribute to the pervasive disparate educational outcomes within our schools. Equity and inclusive education aims to understand, identify, address, and eliminate the biases, barriers, and disparities that limit a teacher's chance to graduate, I'm sorry, excuse me, limit a student's chance to graduate high school prepared for college, for a career, and for life. The superintendent, let me scroll down. The superintendent or their designee will ensure that curriculum and instructional materials reflect the Board's commitment to educational equity. Curriculum and instructional materials for all grades shall reflect diversity and include a range of perspectives and experiences, particularly those of historically underrepresented groups. Equity and inclusive education is an ongoing process that requires shared commitment and leadership. The Board understands that equity and inclusive education is achieved when each adult collaborates and affirms each student by creating a respectful learning environment inclusive of actual or perceived personal characteristics. Educational equity is based on the principles of fairness and ensuring that every student has access to the resources and support they need at the right moment in their education despite any individual's actual or perceived personal characteristics. Inclusive education is based on the principles of acceptance and inclusion of all students. Students see themselves reflected in their curriculum, their physical surroundings, and the broader environment in which diversity is honored and all individuals are respected. Diversity in education means students, staff, families, and community are our greatest strength, and diversity is viewed as an asset. Diversity means the condition of being different or having differences, including but not limited to sex, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender, age, socioeconomic class, religion, and ability, and other human differences. Embracing these diversities and moving beyond tolerance and celebration to inclusivity and respect will help the district reach our goal of creating a community that ensures that each and every voice is heard and valued. Accountability, transparency, and review. The Board, its officers, and employees recognizes every student should have full access to quality education, qualified teachers, challenging curriculum, full opportunity to learn, and sufficient individually tailored support for learning so they can achieve at excellent levels in academic and other student outcomes. The district also accepts its responsibility for moving forward on this journey and committing time, energy, and resources to develop an equitable, inclusive, and diverse working environment for all students, parents, and staff. To this end, the district has created a district-wide committee focused on diversity, equity, and inclusion. The district-wide committee works to address the need for inclusive and culturally responsive teaching and learning. This upcoming school year, the committee will assist administration in developing and implementing goals and practices designed to promote diversity, prevent discrimination, assure equitable access to high-quality I'm sorry, Jeanette, can you? Oh, sorry, I apologize. This upcoming school year, the committee will assist administration in developing and implementing goals and practices designed to promote diversity, prevent discrimination, assure equitable access to high-quality educational staff, facilities, and materials, and to maximize student achievement for all students. There we go, sorry about that. With committee input, during the 2001-2002 school year, the superintendent of schools or their designee shall implement a plan for ensuring that equitable educational opportunities are being provided to all students. In addition, the Board will support training opportunities for students and employees to raise awareness of the issues surrounding cultural responsiveness, equity, and inclusion, and to implement preventative measures to help identify biases and practices that may perpetuate achievement disparities. Age-appropriate instructional materials will be incorporated into the curriculum to educate students so that they can learn from a diverse range of experiences and points of view. Curricular materials and staffing decisions will support these efforts. The Board of Education and the superintendent of schools or their designee will monitor and review the district's efforts to determine the extent to which schools are complying with this policy. The superintendent or their designee will report on progress and outcomes on the equity, inclusivity, and diversity plan. Based on those results, this policy and the objectives set to meet its goals may be revised as needed. Culturally responsive teaching and learning. The Putnam Valley Central School District will provide all students with culturally responsive sustaining learning opportunities that promote high levels of rigorous learning, academic achievement, and personal growth. The Putnam Valley Central School District will represent various cultures and reflect the diverse stories and histories of all students. The Putnam Valley Central School District will cultivate a culturally responsive sustaining education for all students by creating a welcoming and affirming environment, fostering high expectations and rigorous instruction, identifying inclusive curriculum and assessment, and engaging in ongoing professional learning and support. The Putnam Valley Central School District will promote district initiatives, events, programs, and committees that is equitably distributed to and reflective of the diversity of students and families. Equity policy communication. To be successful in this endeavor, it is imperative that all members of the school community are aware of this policy, its purpose, procedures, and the district's commitment to equity and inclusion by fostering a positive learning environment that embraces all diverse, unique, and individual differences. The superintendent or their designee will ensure that this policy is communicated to students, staff, and the community. This policy will be posted on the district's website and other appropriate school publications. The superintendent of schools will review the district's implementation of this policy and take appropriate action to ensure compliance with and enforcement of this policy. Any questions related to the policy?
So this will be our first reading. The second reading, will that be at our next meeting, or is that going to be a month from now? They got to be in July.
I think it would depend upon, sorry, it would depend upon the edits we receive. Assuming there's not many edits or feedback, yeah, then we would put it back up again next meeting unless there's more to be changed.
The source of this, did this come from NISBA? Was this NISBA's policy?
It's based off a template from NISBA, yeah.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
It's based on a template from NISBA.
Thank you. I have this fan behind me, I can't hear, so.
I'm sorry. I've got a lot of bass in my mic here.
Is there, in all of our policies, is there a timeframe that we adopt after the first reading? Because I would personally like to adopt this, not in the summer, to adopt it in September when more people may be, maybe not attending board meetings, but maybe paying attention. I wouldn't want to bury it in terms of the end part with, where Jeanette went, the end part with communicating. I think, you know, I think you start communicating clearly when you introduce the policy. So if we can do it more in September, if we're not locked into a timeframe.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as we're transparent about reading or what the purpose is, I guess the argument on the other side will be, the guidance from the Board of Regents is that the Board expects all districts to develop policies and advance diversity, equity, and inclusion, and that they implement such policies with fidelity and urgency. So I think, I'm not saying that means we have to report it, we have to do it next week, but I think it's something where if we're not going to adopt it, we just want to be transparent as to why. We're waiting until the fall.
And I feel like we can adopt it and then
It could be on the agenda.
reread it and enforce it in September and say that that's, you know, that has given us goals for this year.
Yeah.
Jess, take your mask off, stop.
Hi. So, yeah, I was just going to say, you mean, you pretty much touched on it, what I was going to mention, but the materials and training of the schools, basically the implementation of this policy within the school district, emphasizing what that's going to look like. Because I'm sure this is, this is in the early phases, so we're not going to have all the answers right now, but just emphasizing when we do know what that's going to look like, especially within all three schools. But I would really like to see it in the elementary school because, you know, racism is taught, and earlier you nip it in the bud. Yeah.
Thanks, Jess.
Thank you.
Have I ever disagreed with anything you've said, Jessica? I don't think so. I did, there's one part that I struggled when I read it the first time. I don't know the answer, and it's under culturally responsive teaching and learning.
That's where I got it. I got an issue one there too, so maybe it's the same thing.
I'll go first. The Putnam Valley Central School District will represent various cultures and reflects the diverse stories and histories of all students. What students? Our students? Because that's not reflective, is it?
Right, and our community is not reflective of the larger community either.
Right, but then do we limit it to those in the United States, those in the country? Or do we just end the sentence with diverse stories and histories? I don't know.
Yeah, I like ending it after histories.
Yeah, I believe the intention is to sort of honor the histories or backgrounds of all students within our schools, but certainly I don't think we miss the point if we just remove the "of all students" part and just make it more general and sort of far-reaching.
Right, because we're trying to, if we are not in a diverse community, we're trying to teach our students tolerance, awareness, other stories, perspective-taking, and all of those kinds of things.
Right, because the issue is two sentences further, the last sentence of that section. Diversity of students and families. Right, so, I mean, those two tie together as far as how broad of a
Both of those are
How broad are we talking about?
So we don't have to change the wording here, that's not the purpose of the first reading, but can we highlight those areas? We're going to be highlighting over there? Can we highlight those areas in terms of, I've been thinking, and I can't figure out the perfect wording, but maybe we can the perfect wording, but maybe we can figure it out. Because I can see somebody arguing, why are we talking about this? We don't have any students from this country in our, you know, or from this background in our school. That's not what it's about.
I think the other side of it is, do you focus on maybe on the Asian culture but not represent other cultures of students within our schools?
Right, no.
And that's sort of the intention of it. Make sure you cover everyone, and you just don't focus on Black History Month in February without focusing on Pride Month in June or others.
And then the issue, I mean, the piece that's, last sentence of the second, sorry, last sentence of the second page. The, no, that's not it. Last sentence of the paragraph. The thing that is strong for me is the first sentence, the last sentence of the first paragraph on the second page, embracing these diversities and moving beyond tolerance and celebration. That is so key to this all being successful, because it's not about, you know, like you just said, Dr. Loft, about, you know, the planned Black History Month. It's really going beyond those celebrations. It really needs to be more embedded with multiple different inputs into context for history and for current events and former events in history. So the idea of, you know, going beyond tolerance and celebration is so key to this being successful.
Yeah, I think we're going to go right to that. Yep, I was just thinking the same thing, Mr. Loft. Okay, so we're, since this is a really big issue, and I don't want to bury our student reports or our superintendent reports, I'm going to open it up for public comment on any of the listed agenda items. Anything, Maureen, so far as people are waiting? So we are, so-
I'd like to have some questions from the public. Can we go into the mic?
Thank you.
We have one in the audience, too.
This might have already been answered, but Dawn Watson asks, can you tell us who makes up the, who made up, makes up the Equity Committee? And when recommendations are made throughout the year, will their recommendations be made to the community? And what materials are chosen by the members? And who decides finally what texts and if texts or materials are appropriate?
That's a, that's a big question. It's a very good one. That's a big question.
And I have this follow-up, too.
So I think we had mentioned, the committee is composed right now of individuals, administrators, board members, support staff, and teaching staff from all three buildings, but I know the intention is to open that up to a wider audience. We have partnered with a student group that was already existing within the district, so I know they'll be more involved in those conversations, and I know there's also plans of opening it up to parents. Obviously, the committee as a whole determines what, they set their own course, and they decide which readings they want to do, what resources they want to use. It's for their own personal, professional development. And then obviously, when it comes to something board-related or district-related, then those recommendations would go through myself and eventually approved by the Board of Education.
And her follow-up question was, who was the consultant that the school worked with over the summer?
Trying to remember names?
Janice, was that her name? Yeah, no, it's a consultant. She's a director of equity at a school district in Southern West Chester Bowses. Janice, I know Jeanette's looking at her real quick.
Okay, she's looking. So just to summarize your answer, the committee is going to decide among themselves what materials they'll use to further their work, but materials what's taught to the school district still remains an administrative Board of Education decision. The committee can inform and recommend, but they're not going to make those decisions.
Correct. So what I was saying is, the resources the committee itself, as a group of professional learners uses, is up to them. They're not deciding on what resources will be necessarily disseminated to all 12th grade students. That would be a whole different mechanism, and that type of discussion would go through myself and eventually the Board of Education.
And-
Yeah.
And she's from Bowses.
She's currently the Director of Diversity and Inclusion for the Hastings and Hudson School District. She came up and did work with our committee over the summer.
Okay, any other public comment on agenda items?
Can yourself please come up to the microphone?
Sorry, you're right behind a camera. I couldn't see your hand.
That's all right. My first question is, I would like to get some examples from you, specific examples of times when the school has behaved in a racially inequitable fashion. And while you're at it, anytime the school here has not been inclusive, when has that happened? Just give me, give me two examples, that's all. Then we can go from there. I have further questions. Any? When has this happened? When have you done this? And if you have, why?
So I think my quick answer is that there's probably a long list of students that feel as if they have not been included, not to speak about individual student issues.
That'd be great. Tell them, give me one example. You don't have to give me the name.
No, I mean, that's not really the intention.
No name, no name, just an example where the school was oppressive on a racial level to any student. Or if they behaved non-inclusively. No name, just-
So there's certainly instances with students who may be transitioning or deciding on their sexuality, being teased by other students, being called names. That is one, a sort of general example of the type of behaviors that we deal with on a regular basis. We also have, there's been cases, instances last week with students using inappropriate racial terms towards other students.
What did you do to the student? That's not allowed, right?
Of course not.
Okay, so it's already not allowed. Did you take action on that student? Did you fix the problem of that individual student who behaved inappropriately? Or it now becomes something that you've done wrong? I'm asking honestly here. Is that, was that your fault? Was that your fault?
I would say, as the person responsible for this school district, it's my job to make sure that all students are best prepared to handle those situations, to be supportive and accepting of each other, to acknowledge and celebrate the diversity of each other. So I would say, yes. I wish I had done a better job and identified those students and corrected those behaviors prior to them coming out of my schools.
And I'm going to jump in.
You punished that student.
I'm going to jump in with an example that I've heard from students of color who have been told that people express surprise when they perform so well. So it's very subtle. It's, I don't think, you know, I'm not going to interpret where your question's coming. I don't think we're a blatantly racist school district. I don't believe we're a, we're-
I wouldn't think so either.
... a community of wonderfully nice people. But I think there's things that happen that we just want to be very aware of and have up in the forefront, so we are not inadvertently intolerant or uninclusive. All right, and could I-
When you see intolerance, do you address it? When you see intolerance or some sort of non-inclusivity, do you address it? Is it, does it get fixed on the level that it's at?
I would say yes. When we're aware of it, we address it, but you can imagine of how much of it occurs that we are unaware of and then hence unable to address. In hallways, on buses, on sports fields, and on social media, on the weekends, on, there is a-
So you're-
Much of these students' lives are well beyond our control. So the more we can-
But you're trying to get it in your control. That's the-
No, it's not my job to control every minute of every student's life. What I'm trying to do-
That's what this manifesto is about.
I'm trying to teach students how to handle these situations, to be accepting of others regardless of differences they may have-
As they should.
Perspective-taking.
As they should. But now the next question is, recruiting and hiring, I see that it's going to be supported by recruiting and hiring. So are you saying now that the school district will be hiring people based on their race while you're simultaneously trying to teach people not to, not to evaluate people based on their race? Is that, maybe I'm not clear on that, but it sounds like you're hiring people based on race, gender, sexual preference, as opposed to qualifications, where what is trying to be done here is teach people, teach the children that they shouldn't be evaluating anybody based on their race, gender, or sexual preference. But that is in fact what you plan on doing?
Okay, so let me step in. That one, that is a completely inaccurate statement.
Okay.
What our goal is, we would like to encourage a more diverse pool of candidates to apply for our positions, and that is really the intention of these equity fairs and other opportunities. If a hundred male blond-haired, blue-eyed applicants apply for every position, that's the only teachers we'll ever hire, or blond-haired, blue-eyed male teachers, but doesn't mean that every male blond-haired, blue-eyed teacher is the best teacher in the world, just they're the only ones who apply here.
Have you not, have you not gotten a broad base of applicants? Is that been an issue?
No, we don't. We tend to not. So our goal is, we want to broaden the diversity of the candidates we have that are interested in working here in Putnam Valley. And then of that candidate pool, as we always do, we hire the most qualified candidate regardless of any of those other factors. So the goal is to increase the diversity of our pool, not to hire people based upon their individual diversity or differences.
Okay. So how will you go about getting people of different sexual, I don't want to say persuasions because it's not a persuasion, but people of different races, genders, and sexual proclivities?
So the way we go about doing that is we contact historically black colleges and ask them if they would be interested in posting our positions, sending potential candidates to apply for our positions if they find them to be interesting. We have obviously these equity-driven job fairs, so we encourage diverse candidates to sign up for these job fairs, and the school districts all over the region will go in and interview candidates to get a level of interest and hopefully, again, broaden their pool. So regardless of our efforts to, we want as many people to apply, as many highly qualified candidates to apply for all of our positions.
But you will recruit based on race. That's what you just said. But you will be recruiting based on race. Not necessarily hiring, but your recruiting efforts will be made based on race.
Well, we'll continue to recruit the way we've always recruited.
You just said that you would be recruiting at black colleges, and I have nothing against black colleges, but you're recruiting specifically based on race while you're attempting to teach people that it shouldn't be about race.
Your question was, how do we go about identifying those candidates? In which I was answering your question for how we go about identifying diverse candidates. I in no way said that's the only way in which we recruit. And if you were to look at any of our candidate pools, we have no problem recruiting highly qualified candidates, white candidates, for sure. So I don't need to go out of my way to get more highly qualified white candidates to apply, but we're certainly willing to put some effort in to get more diverse candidates to apply for these positions. Again, assuming that they're highly qualified, because at the end of the day, the most highly qualified person is the one getting hired regardless of all those other factors.
As it should be. I mean, there's plenty of family members, I know there's in the school itself right now, and plenty of people within the same family, so that seems to be one way that it's been, recruiting has been done, or at least jobs have been given. The, this consultant, so this consultant is going to be maintained?
That's not decided at this time, no. It was a consultant who came in to help us get our committee up and running. There is no contract in place for them to come back this year.
Okay, something to think about. That's it, except one statement in addition to the questions. By constantly bringing in race, and religion, and gender, and sexual preference, you're perpetuating, you're perpetuating the entire concept. Perhaps alternatively to this manifesto, ignoring it altogether, and not ignoring incidents, that's not what I mean, but by not hiring, recruiting, discussing, bringing it into every piece of everyday life, perhaps it won't be on top of everybody's mind as often as it is. If the people in the community wanted to send their children to parochial school where they would have a biased education based on a certain thought pattern and thought stream, then they would have done that. But instead, they sent them here to get an objective and unbiased education. So please think about that when you start implementing your manifesto. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jess, did you have something? You just got, come on to the mic.
Was that a prom injury or a sports injury on your knee? I hope not a prom injury.
Oh, no, this is a sport injury, and then I went to prom, and I was just kind of like, deal with it. Personally, I know people in, within the school district who have experienced, sorry. I'm getting really upset about this.
While Jess is pulling herself together, I'd like to say, as a former classroom teacher in Putnam Valley, 15 years ago, when I was teaching New York State history and doing what I believed was a good job, I didn't realize at the time that the perspectives that I were given was, that I was giving, my students were almost all from the point of view of the settlers, the Mayflower Contract, the revolutionary, the causes of the Revolutionary War, the French and Indian War, whatever. Over time, and towards the end of those 15 years, I became aware through diversity articles and education that there were historical documents, first-person documents, of the Iroquois tribes in their own language, of the Tories, and not just the Patriots in the Revolutionary War. And so I broadened the history that I was teaching to my fourth graders in a way that I hadn't 15 years ago. Maybe because I, I don't know, I just, I wasn't aware that I was limiting the stories that they were hearing. And I would say that my training in diversity allowed me to discover or uncover and begin to use documents that showed students more than one perspective of the history of New York State. And I think that was better for my students.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I know people personally who, at this school, who experience and continue to experience and will continue to experience certain things and feelings of being other until things are done to address it. So pretending that it's not there or not acknowledging it is perpetuating the problem because, sorry, it's assuming a position of neutrality and allowing- because, sorry, it's assuming a position of neutrality and allowing things to happen. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your input, Jess.
Just to like, well, first of all, Jess is awesome, by the way. This is the first time I've ever seen her cry. And I'm like astounded, and I'm almost getting a little emotional right now. But she's amazing. But I've been personally lucky enough to be on like a committee multiple times for new hires. I guess that's what you would call it. I was on for the physics teacher last year, or not last year, two years ago. The vice principal of the middle school, like when I was in eighth grade. And I can tell you the pool of people that come in is exceptionally diverse. And every time, they've definitely hired the person who is most well-suited for the job. And it's, there's no, like, I would definitely say the school is definitely not racist in this regard, when hiring teachers and hiring staff members, that they've done the best possible job to hire these people without any sort of bias. From what I've seen. I mean, I don't know of times before this, but I've loved the eight years that I've been here. And I think that it's great that the fact that they have brought students in to talk on matters and include them in so many sorts of things. Like, the fact that Jess and I are here right now shows how inclusive the school is. And I think that this is going to be great. I'm not going to be here. But I'm kind of losing the words that I planned. That's it. Yeah.
Okay. Do we usually do them first?
Just one more thing.
Sorry, just introduce... oh, sorry.
I hadn't anticipated standing up and speaking tonight, but I do feel compelled, particularly because there are two students in the room and maybe more students at home watching. I want to publicly say thank you to Dr. Luft. I want to say thank you to Ms. Mistrata. And I want to say thank you to the board. This work is important. This work is valid. This work is relevant. And it's no secret that we have an achievement gap in the United States. That's not a Putnam Valley issue, that's a national issue. And there's no secret, there are systems in place that oppress students across the nation. This work is valid and it's important that the students here, that I as a parent, and many of my friends, parents in the Putnam Valley community, support this work wholeheartedly. So I want to say thank you. It's messy work, it's difficult work, it's uncomfortable work. But if we don't do this work, we are negligent. Not just as a board, not just as educators, but as a community. So thank you.
I would like to add to that. I think it's so important to capture the complete history of American history, of all people. Many times it's been one-sided, and such as Black History. It's American history, everything. I think that's the importance. Another suggestion, I think, doing a community survey of school climate for the students and families. I think that would give us a lot of information of strengths and weaknesses as a district to move forward with this type of work.
Good suggestion, thank you. Okay. If there's nothing else, are we ready for the student reports? Did you want to go first? Do you want Dr. Luft to go first? Are you guys ready? I always like you to go first, because then here's the scramble, the sound is good.
Exactly. Our whole job is to make Dr. Luft sound bad. So, you're welcome. So I think Jess, I'm going to have to talk about prom, because that was like her big achievement. She was a lot more excited about it than I was. I was just like, I get to wear a suit, eat food, and dance. I'm going to talk about the Science Research Symposium, because I'm a science research student. That happened last Thursday. It was great. Twelve new freshmen coming into the program next year, which we love to see it. I mean, a little less than my class, but it's all right. And of course, Mr. Zupan, best teacher ever. Sorry. It's great, the science research program going strong. We had two of the Regeneron people, Aleah and Emma. Amazing jobs, as always. And that was, I'm running out of words, darn it. So the Science Research Symposium happened, and I'm really excited for next year's program. And I definitely want to come back to see Mr. Zupan and see what everybody's up to.
Do you want to talk about prom now?
Yeah, better topic.
Oh, and he didn't mention that they had a great master of ceremonies, Devin Rooney and Parker.
I was going to say, I spent my first two hours this morning watching the video of it. You guys did a great job. And the presentations were amazing. You blew me away, so thank you. Great job.
Yeah, so prom is tomorrow... oh, prom was yesterday. Sorry. Color Wars is tomorrow. Right before the meeting, I went downstairs to the gym to watch the seniors and juniors practice, because there's a dance competition as one of the events. So, yeah. Yeah, so prom was yesterday, a lot of fun. I don't, I... something that I talked about with some people there who I haven't talked to in a really long time because of COVID. It was nice seeing everybody in the grade after not seeing them for so long. It was just kind of like, everybody was just like relaxed and having fun, and it felt normal. So, yeah. What else? I just want to say thank you to everybody who put a lot of work into it, because I know that it wasn't easy, especially like our... Yeah, yeah. Ms. Anderson and Mr. Ellis Sasser, and who else? Yeah, Prom Proms Committee. We called ourselves the Prom Proms, I don't know. Ms. Wilson also put a lot of work into it. So everybody who did said thank you. It was a great night. And Color Wars is tomorrow. All of the events will be livestreamed, I believe. If, I don't know where they're going to be accessed, but I'm sure on the website or something. On the website?
In your grade-level Google Classroom.
Grade-level Google Classroom.
Kind of even just a little bit of P V people.
Okay, just the P V people. Yeah. So, yeah. Students watching at home. So, yeah. That's pretty much it. I don't really think there's anything else.
I was a little disappointed yesterday that Dr. Luft didn't show up and brought some amazing dance moves. That was just me personally.
I would like to see that as well, Parker.
I was like, oh, sweet Dr. Luft is going to show up, he's going to start breakdancing.
Unless you want to see the Running Man, I'm pretty much out.
I was doing the Running Man yesterday. I don't know how to dance. Well, I mean, the shows will tell you otherwise, but I don't know how to dance.
Thank you so much for a great year.
See you guys.
And you are coming to our last meeting?
Yes, of course you will.
Excellent. We'll see you then.
Thank you so much.
All right. Dr. Luft, go ahead.
Thank you.
It's now time for the superintendent's report.
All right, so starting with some exciting news. One of our next agenda items, the board will have the opportunity to appoint Ms. Jacqueline Levine as our next Director of Curriculum Instruction. So a little prelude to what's coming. We also are in the process of filling our Director of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health position. Mr. Burrow is taking another position over in Minnesick Valley. We've completed screenings of candidates, and four finalists are scheduled to move forward to the larger committee, which will be held on June 15th. Later in the board meeting, the board will be acting on a moratorium not allowing children of non-district faculty members to attend school district schools for the 21-22 school year unless they attended the previous year. So although that resolution is on the board agenda, preliminary conversations have begun, and I'm assuming will continue regarding the consideration for new tuition rules in the future. Several members of the board and myself and Mr. Spittle met with members of the Yorktown Planning Board on campus last Saturday morning to discuss their proposed solar farm in the property adjacent to the middle school. We were able to take them on a walk, show them firsthand exactly where the panels would be, how they would infringe upon the visual landscape and the serenity of our trail. And really, most of the focus was on the already overwhelming groundwater issues that we experienced. In some ways, it worked out, although it had not rained for 14 straight days. The water was ripping through the drainage basin on that side of the property. So it just gave them a good firsthand example as to how much groundwater we're dealing with. Those following the facilities project extremely closely. We dug down 20 feet to put in new drainage in front of the middle school, because the basement floods every time it rains. And that just again is some of the expenses we put into trying to control the groundwater that's already coming out of that adjacent property.
However, it doesn't seem, based on that meeting, that that train's stopping anytime soon. It really didn't feel like...
I did not leave with that feeling.
The solar farm was not going anywhere. As I was just saying, not going away. It seemed like it was on a fast train.
I think my hope is that if it does go forward, maybe we get a greater setback. We get the geological study for the groundwater, maybe more basins and retention ponds, and hopefully some plantings to help shield the district property from what will be the clear cutting in the adjacent property. That's my hope. The New York State Controller's Office contacted us. Every five to eight years, they come to schools to conduct an audit. This is in no response to any findings. But the Controller's Office will be in district this summer, first conducting a risk assessment to determine their eventual area of focus. Something exciting for the business office to look forward to. Just a quick COVID update. We have no new cases to report, so several weeks in a row, knock on wood, we haven't had any. And regional numbers remain low. Putnam County, .6 percent, New York State, .6 percent. And on the vaccination front, Putnam County individuals age 18 and older, 69.7 percent have received at least one dose, or almost at 70 percent. And individuals 12 and older, all individuals, sorry, starting at 12 and older, 58.4 percent of them have received at least one dose. And then a quick rundown of events past and present. We just finished our Seal of Bileiteracy presentations, it's on May 24th. Those students will receive the endorsement on their diploma and be recognized at graduation. Science Research Symposium, as Parker had mentioned. Titles that nobody understands, except for the kids themselves, and maybe Mr. Zupan sometimes. But impressive work. I feel like they're all writing their doctoral dissertations in high school. The high school prom was yesterday. It was nice to have everyone together, dressed up, glitter on their masks or bling or anything like that. We had this morning, the Hudson Valley Gateway Scholarship awarded a scholarship to Mia Leoni. And I was able to be on their meeting and to award her that scholarship. So a great accomplishment, and congratulations to Mia. We have an IB diploma celebration scheduled for June 7th. The high school academic awards for underclassmen, June 14, 15, 16. Senior awards, June 9th. The middle school play, Mary Poppins, be a virtual performance on June 11th and 12th, I believe. High school graduations. There's been a lot of conversations regarding end-of-year events. It was always our hope to find a way to honor our students in a way that was safely and respectfully of all we could do so. So our high school graduation is scheduled on June 18th. It'll be outdoors on the turf, two guests per student who comply with state regulations. Our middle school moving up ceremony is moved to June 19th. The reason for the date change is because we had the vendor set up the ceremony for the high school a day earlier, so the middle school can use the same setup. And that will be June 17th, again, outdoor on the turf, two guests per student. The elementary school moving up ceremony is scheduled for June 23rd. In conversations with the elementary school and parent organizations, a decision was made to keep it at the elementary school as opposed to bringing them over to this campus and to instead have smaller in-person ceremonies inside of the building. Again, limited to two guests per student. Then we have other end-of-year events, eighth-grade barbecue, elementary school field day as well. And then I know, just moving forward, next meeting, a couple of events, this will come up again later. But I did want to specify KGND was originally scheduled to do their five-year plan presentation. This meeting, there was a conflict, so they were rescheduled for the 17th. So there'll be now a presentation on the 17th along with Acume Partners. That's it, thank you.
So I guess we'll move on to new business. And, Ms. Seria, we did public comment. Public comment on any other agenda items?
Nothing in the email.
Nothing in the email, thank you. All right, Mr. Burrow, can you start us off with number one?
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Maureen Lynch to a four-year probationary term as General Education and Special Education Teacher commencing on September 1st, 2021, terminating on August 31st, 2025, in the tenure area of elementary and special education at the middle school and Step 1 MA PVFT salary schedule. Ms. Lynch holds childhood education 1 through 6 and students with disabilities initial certifications. In order to be eligible for appointment to tenure, said employee must receive at least three APPR ratings of effective or highly effective during the four-year probationary term. They may not receive an ineffective rating in the final year of probation.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number two?
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education hereby appoints Jacqueline Levine as the Director of Curriculum and Instruction, in the Director of Curriculum Instruction tenure area to serve a four-year probationary appointment effective July 6th, 2021, through July 5th, 2025, at an annual salary of $165,000 effective July 6th, 2021. Ms. Levine holds the following certifications: School District Leader Professional Certificate, School Building Leader Initial Certificate, Childhood Education Grades 1 through 6, and Early Childhood Education Birth Through Grade 2 Professional Certificates.
Second? Questions or comments?
I'd just like to acknowledge that Ms. Levine is here this evening along with her husband Alex, also an educator, principal. And then just a quick highlight of Jackie and how she ended up here. Jackie emerged in a candidate pool of over 70 candidates to move forward to eventually be recommended to the Board of Education. She joins us coming from Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's, where she's the Coordinator of School Leadership and Marketing Services. She also has an extensive background as a regional literacy coordinator and professional developer, as well as a classroom teacher. So we very much welcome Jackie on board and looking forward to having her join our team. It's almost official, hold on.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to the boring Stormwater.
Oh, so you got to take her to dinner now.
Karaoke.
Moving on to number three, Mrs. Porley.
Number three. Resolved on recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the Stormwater Management Program Annual Report prepared by CFE Consulting Services LLC as per document number 192/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second?
Questions or comments?
Quick comment, just for anyone who hasn't read it yet. The district received adequate development and implementation for every category in there. There was nothing that they said that we had to do. We just had to continue the work that we were doing. So it was a very positive report with regards to the district.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four?
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve a bill of sale with the County of Putnam as per document 194/21 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting for the purchase of four county privacy booths at the cost of $1,000.
$1.
I'm sorry. $1 in total to be used by the school district for school votes.
Second?
Questions or comments?
$1 is cheaper than $1,000.
Yes. It's a symbolic cost. All in favor?
Aye.
Number five?
Resolved on recommendation of Superintendent of Schools to approve the first reading of Policy 0105, Equity, Inclusivity, and Diversity in Education as per document number 19721 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second?
Questions or comments?
So we'll do further review, continue review, and if there are changes, we'll be read again.
Exactly. This is not, this is not appointing, not appointing, what's the word?
It's not a final review.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Number six?
Resolved upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to continue the moratorium on approving the admission of non-resident children of professional staff who are not previously enrolled in district schools during the 2020-21 school year. Siblings of these students currently enrolled in the district may attend with specific approval of the board and the payment of tuition.
Second? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the consent agenda, number one?
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve items number 2 through 10 as appears on the consent... number two through 10, as appears on the consent agenda of this meeting.
Second?
Questions or comments?
We're approving unpaid days for two employees, we're approving additional hours for one teacher to complete some CSE work, and to work with class placements and scheduling, we're approving a proctor for the AP exams for one teacher, and we're approving another person to work with some other district programs. We're approving a leave of absence for an employee from the 17th of June to the end of the year. We're amending the leave of absence for another employee with regard to the dates. We're approving a health and welfare contract with the New Rochelle School District for five Putnam Valley students attending non-public schools in their district. We're accepting a donation of 50 new backpacks from a community member to be given to our students, and we're approving 2021 summer extended school year for staff, so these are staff that work with students during the summer.
And I'm not sure if you read everything, we are also resolving that the Putnam Valley Board of Education is nominating Mr. Guy Cohen of the Putnam Valley Central School District for the Everett R. Dyer Award for distinguished school board service. That doesn't mean he's going to win, it just means we're nominating him. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
What? I'll abstain, I'm not even counting your votes. Okay, and upcoming meeting topics?
Yeah, just the two that I had mentioned earlier, the five-year facilities plan from K G and D, Acum Partners will give us an update regarding audit, and then obviously, June, July 1st is our reorganization meeting.
Can we add to the next meeting presentation from Brian, a year wrap-up on athletics, since it's going to be his last?
What a nice idea, Mr. Burrow.
Of course, we didn't have a wrap-up last year, because we didn't have an end-of-year last year, and, you know, it'd be good to have him give us a chance to say goodbye to him, too.
And now, the public is invited to comment on any topic, and I'm going to jump in and do mine first. I have been asked by the New York State School Board Association to present the Board Mastery Award to Ms. Barbara Parmley for participation in leadership development opportunities on her own time, totaling 250 points, and she has been awarded one complimentary training.
Ah.
So let us all back to back again. Thank you. Mrs. Parmley is living proof that people are lifelong learners.
It's true. It's what I love best.
Congratulations, Barbara.
Thanks. I don't know what 200 and whatever points means, but thanks.
That was my question for you. You get a cold watch if you get to 1,000?
They never said how many points I was getting.
Now you have to attend a training to explain the points.
Now I have to keep track.
Go to the next level.
Yeah.
You're current.
Ms. Weiner, do we have anything from the public on any non-agenda items?
So we meet one more time before graduation?
Yes, the day before.
And it is, hold on, try the day before.
What time is the moving up? Is it in daytime for those middle school?
Middle school one is in daytime, parents are free to sign their students out afterwards.
We're meeting that night, okay. All right, at this time, I'd like to resolve to convene an executive session for 14 manners of the employment history of 14 particular persons, after which time, no further business will be conducted.
Second?
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Happy June, everybody.